So, before we get into business, I want to have the three board members who were just elected. Uh, well, there are three here. So... Would you, would you three stand? Dr. Ridge Bowe-Brake, Maloney, Stuart Campbell, and Ms. Sue Bowley?
Thank you.
Just want you to know how big the shoes you are filling. So, we're ready to adopt the agenda?
Mr. President, I move the Board to approve the agenda as presented.
Sir? Any discussion? Ready to vote?
The votes are open?
Alright, next on the agenda is school highlights. Dr. Anderson, sit at the podium.
This is our favorite part of the Board meeting, and it's a favorite part because we get to celebrate students. I had the good fortune of meeting and connecting with Cheyenne just yesterday, I believe. Or the day before yesterday.
Yeah.
She's on Superintendent's Student Advisory Council. I'm gonna ask Mr. Ackerman to come forward, and as he comes forward, we'll start the video about Cheyenne, and then we will ask this young lady to come and join us.
My name is Cheyenne James. I go to Highland Park High School, and I'm a senior.
She is the epitome of what high school students should be. She not only is a student here, but she is involved in every single possible activity there is in this building, it seems.
Having volleyball, dance, grow up, softball, B.S.U., gear up. I was not surprised to hear that Cheyenne was gonna be seen this month because she is really a leader in her peers. A lot of people look up to her, and she's involved in so many different activities. But everybody knows who she is and knows what she's got going on.
I would say other students describe Cheyenne as very outgoing, very personable, very positive. She has so many attributes that could fit her name, but students really look up to her.
I would say I met a lot of people, like people who have affected my life drastically in different things that I was involved in. And so, really being involved, it was just kinda like involved me as a person, 'cause it opened me up to many things that I never thought I would need. Yes, I plan to either attend U.M.C.C., University of North Kansas City, or Wichita State University in the hope of becoming an anesthesiologist or an anaesthetist. So, I got a lot of school ahead of me, so yeah, that's what I've been doing. Cheyenne always calls herself a real person, and I think that's really true. She is not afraid to speak up for herself or for people around her, and she definitely wants to share her perspective of the world with those around her. But she's also really willing to listen to other people and hear what are other ways to think about things that she maybe hadn't considered.
I wish she could stick around for a while. You know, what's crazy about seniors is you take four years to get to build relationships with them, and then they are gone, and they're out doing bigger and better things. You just kinda wanna keep them around, because they are such a positive influence. She loves Highland Park High School, she loves the teachers, she loves the staff. She comes every day and wants to make Highland Park better.
You can depend on anyone, anywhere you go, even if you don't know each other, you can just jump in. "Hey, you wanna fit in the meeting in the cafeteria?" Even if it's just a new person. But we don't exclude anyone from anything, we're just all one team. You know, just like a family, we have our ups and downs, but for the most part, we're one team, that's what we're on. I wouldn't wanna go either.
President, you Cheyenne James, please come forward. Congratulations on being seen as a member. Mr. Ackerman, would you like to say a few words, and then we'll turn over the microphone to you?
Absolutely. Absolutely, one of my favorite students in my 20 years of education. She's a joy to be around. Oh, okay. Sorry, I got referred without a mic. Thank you. But she's a pure joy to be around every day. I wasn't joking when I said I wanna keep her around, and maybe we can manipulate some grades. Mr. Gallen, fifth year, maybe, that would be awesome. But again, she is the epitome of what a high school student, what you want a high school student to be. And I always go, when the eighth graders come up and they tour the school, and I tell the eighth graders, "The best thing that you can do is get involved in as many things as you possibly can, because that is what will make high school a positive experience for you. You're more likely, again, to graduate and to move on and to do, and to do bigger, better things." I don't know if I told her that, but she took it to heart from someone and got involved in anything and everything. I wouldn't be surprised if she went to the play after we leave here that we're having this evening, the first night, because she does come to everything. And there was a question that was asked at the Superintendent's Advisory Council yesterday in regards to school spirit. And Dr. Anderson said, "Well, what do you attribute the increase in school spirit to?" And I'm over there thinking, "Well, it's students like Cheyenne, because she is such a fan of Highland Park. She is so proud to be a student there, and she goes to activities, and she supports everyone in everything. And so, she not only gets involved, but what she's not involved in, she becomes involved because she goes to those activities. And so, she doesn't realize how positive of an impact she has on others as well."
I do, I do. She said she's gonna speak for like 20 minutes.
Do you wanna open your gift? Oh yeah, right here. Open your gift.
I'll play right here. A couple things in there.
There's a card. It's open it now.
Okay, that's my thoughts.
We just like to do this. Maybe you learn it's cool.
Good hydro class. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you. Thank you. I have an eyeball in this shirt, in off this gold top, too.
Since you weren't quite able to decide where you're going yet, I just gave her a gift card and let her use it.
Gift in the card, you were right.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, great, look.
Thank you. I love you too.
Alright, now, the Board may have a question or two that they would like to ask you, Ms. James.
Board members. Dr. Peg McCarthy. Oh, you're gonna talk to us first?
No, I was, she's actually pretty shy, I was actually, she doesn't like to talk to us.
Ms. James, I was, would you like to make a comment or two? Certainly, as the senior class president, there might be a comment or two you'd like to make. I'll turn it over to you.
First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Ackerman and my parents for always uplifting me and just keeping me afloat and believing me even when I didn't believe in myself, because I've had many rough days, I've had good days as well, but a lot of rough days. And I would like to thank you for trusting me to represent Highland Park in nothing but a positive manner. And I love you guys.
You bring someone with you?
Yes, and these are my parents, Tamika and Christopher James.
Okay, Dr. McCarthy.
Hi there.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you for coming tonight. It is such a pleasure for us to get to see students one-on-one, and we always enjoy hearing a little more detail about some of your experiences. Any of your teachers through the years, even when you were a little one? Anybody you wanna tell us about, or any of the classes or experiences at your various schools that have made an impact on your life?
I would say Mr. Dennis Kelly, he's retired now, but he was my fifth grade teacher at Roswell Elementary. And he just really, he always reminded me that I was beautiful, and it just, it really did, I'm sorry. He would always play songs for me and just, uh, sorry. I'm sorry.
That's wonderful, he really made, made a difference.
Yes.
For you. Yeah. What about in high school? Any particular teachers or subjects that really inspired you?
I would say Mr. Ackerman was a person, and subjects as far as like math, reading, science, yes.
What, what gave you an interest in anesthesiology?
Honestly, I've always wanted to be under anesthesia, and I just never have. I'm not gonna lie to you, I was like, "Mom, can I get my wisdom teeth taken out, please, now?" And one day, I just, I was searching on the internet, professions in the medical field, and I found anesthesiologist and anesthesiologist, and I was like, "Ooh, that sounds cool, I get to fill people asleep." And so, I was like, and then I just, really just continued to wanna be it. And then recently, I've thought of an anaesthetist.
Yes, those are excellent careers. Thank you, man.
So, yeah, like I said, I'll go through a lot of schooling, it's like an additional 12 years, but I'm vocal down and ready to go.
Well, thank you for coming tonight, and I just love your beautiful smile and your professional presentation. And I don't know if you know it, but you really, you command, you have a commanding presence.
Thank you.
And that, that will take you far. So, it makes me very proud as a Board member to have you as a representative of our school district.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes. Hello, Ms. Cheyenne.
Hi.
Just wanted to congratulate you too, and I agree with what Dr. McCarthy said. As soon as I saw your face, I mean, you do command a presence, I mean, you do have a presence that commands our attention. I was specifically thinking about what you said about the fifth grade teacher, and this thing, we talk about a lot, about relationships, and this need to have them as far as building you up as a student. But then when I saw that video, I saw how you create relationships, and how you connected so many different people, and the power of a relationship. And so, I appreciate that for you as a young person, because you see your, um, how you actually implement to other people's life, and you, you connect that way. So, I just wanna congratulate you on that too, understanding that at this age. I think that's something I didn't get till I was late in life. But I definitely appreciate all that you've already done, and look forward to everything that you have coming forward, moving forwards.
Thank you.
Ms. Cheyenne, you, you...
Oh, you're with her, I'm sorry.
It's the God. You do know that if you're an anesthesiologist, you don't get put to sleep.
Yes, but I just wanted to see how it felt, I was like, huh, I wonder what you think when you're...
You'll have to find a fellow resident to help you with that.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cheyenne, everything you heard and everyone say is true. Incredibly poised, I mean, so, they describe you as shy. I don't really see, I mean, your poise, beyond being incredibly poised and smooth and articulate and funny, your affect is just so happy, it like radiates, you know, joy, it's contagious. So, it makes everybody up here smile automatically, and you command our presence because we automatically like you.
Thank you.
Well, you know, some people have that, that gift, so congratulations. I'm kinda curious on, so you want to go into anesthesia?
Yes, will you let me practice one?
Only if I need a procedure. No one's ever asked me that.
Let me know, let me know.
Sorry about that, I didn't handle that question. I'm kinda curious though, so with every, all of the gifts and the talents that you have, you're obviously incredibly bright, incredibly hardworking, but the way you command a room, where do you wanna be in like five, or I guess after 12 years? After you've been practicing for a little while, what do you see yourself doing beyond just what you study?
I've always said that I wanted to adopt kids, so, I know that's fine, like, I push that out there, but I wanna just, I wanna have a family by the time I'm 28, settle down, and adopt two kids. I don't know why, I've always said I just don't wanna have my own kids, 'cause there's just a lot of kids out there who don't have homes, so why keep making more? Um, so, sorry, no disrespect for any, but... So, yeah, that's, that's probably just life, and just live happily and comfortably.
Sure. Thank you, well, congratulations, and we wish you the best, and we look forward to your picture hanging up out there. You can get there from here, you know, in 20 years, when you're hopefully not putting me to sleep, but taking care of other folks in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Ms. Kirk.
Well, you may have said this in the video, but I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the video audio very well, so you may have to repeat yourself, but one of the questions that my colleagues always have, and they didn't ask this time, is where are you planning to go to school?
I plan to attend either U.M.C.C. or Wichita State.
Okay.
I'm just in between the two. It's just, yeah, because my brother already attends Wichita, and I don't wanna seem like a follower, so I'm just like, huh. But I really do love this school.
You know, lots of anesthesiologists come from KUs.
Yeah, so usually you're saying, they're pushing KU or K-State here at this table, so there's always some competition.
I've been admitted to all four, so...
I'm sorry?
I've been accepted to all four, so it's all about which one.
So, just like, what you want, like, 'cause you have wonderful options, so...
Yes.
Whatever fits you the best is gonna be it, right?
Yes.
You're delighted, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
And we ask for Cheyenne's tablet to please remain for about five minutes, so we can get a photo with all of you and the school board. At this time, we have our proclamation, that is, this is Native American Heritage Month. Mrs. Wallace will share a few things about what we do, and will share who will be joining us with reading the bit of the proclamation.
Okay, thank you. So, we do have three people here from our Indian Education Department. Mrs. Bagshaw, who coordinates the program, Amy Minor and Yale Taylor, who both work the summer program for the last several years, and are coordinating elementary Native American parent events this year. This is a first for us, and so, we had our first parent engagement event a couple of weeks ago. I believe we had about seven families come, and signed up, I think, four or five more students into the program. So, it was a, it'll, it'll be a slow start, but we're hoping we gain momentum.
Ms. Bagshaw and team, please come forward as we read the proclamation.
Proclamation of Topeka Unified School District Number 501, Native American Heritage Month, November 2019. Whereas, Topeka Public Schools wishes to commemorate the sacrifices of indigenous people or the Native American Indians across this great land from the time immemorial, immemorable, I can't even say that, immemorable up to including the 21st century. And whereas, during the month of November, we take time to reflect upon the contributions made in the past, to celebrate the peaceful coexistence of the present, and to eagerly anticipate our future as we proudly accept the gifts continually given from the members of the Native American Indians, including students in the Topeka Public Schools. In witness whereof, we, the Board of Education of Topeka Unified School District Number 501, do hereby affix the signature of our president and the official seal of the Board of Education this 7th day of November, 2019.
Alright, and at this time, we're gonna take, stay up here for just a minute, 'cause we're about to take a photo, Ms. Bagshaw and team. And if we'll take a five-minute break, is that satisfactory?
Perfect.
Alright, take a five-minute break. Alright, Senior Lamai, come on up. You know, HPH, you're the senior advisor from here. Alright, you have... Come right on up, sir, Cheyenne. Cheyenne, you want to...
Yes, sorry.
Hold on, hold on. You have a better...
And settle right up there. Alright. Will you join?
Three, one, two.
Alright, Ms. Bagshaw and team, you like this?
Yeah.
They're gonna be short by now.
Alright, I'm ready for it, see you right here.
One, two, three.
Keep up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Earning your credits, guys. Dr. Alexander was...
As we return to our seats. We'll resume the meeting. See, next on the agenda would be public communications, and we have none. Therefore, we're ready to dispose of business by consent.
Mr. President, I move the Board to approve the items of business by consent, exempting Section 9.1, the personnel report. And authorize the Board, the President, or Superintendent to sign a special project and purchasing contracts on, for and on behalf of the Board.
Motion and second, any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote?
Mr. President, I move the Board to approve item number 9.1 on the consent calendar as presented.
Wait, a motion and second, any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote? Okay, next would be the Superintendent's report.
So, this evening, we have Mr. Dick that'll be coming forward to talk a little bit about graduation rate. The graduation rate in total will be talked about at the next Board meeting, in part because Mr. Kidd is out today. However, we knew that the graduation rates for Topeka, Hope Street, Cap City, and really all schools in Central and East Topeka, so in Highland Park High, those principals plan to attend the next Board meeting, because they each would like to share with you a little bit about their rate and answer questions. So, the Central and East Topeka principals will be here at the next meeting. They'll be speaking, just as Mr. Dick is, they created their own PowerPoint. We're doing something a little different this year. Since Mr. Kidd is out, the overall graduation rate will be shared at the next meeting along with those principals. But Mr. Dick, we'll turn it over to him to talk about Topeka West and some highlights.
Gilead, you'll talk about one of my favorite topics, graduation. So, it's always fun for me. So, we just thought we'd share a little bit about graduation at Topeka West, some of the things, the successes we've had there, and then a little bit of some of the systems that we have in place there that we're using in all schools across the district, and some things that have grown out of some of the success that we've had. So, the first slide, you can see graduation rates over time, and so, I am very pleased to say that for the second year in a row, we achieved a 95% graduation rate. We did not decline, so pretty pleased and proud of that. Couple of highlights from graduation overall at Topeka West this year. We maintained the 95% graduation rate. Our Hispanic graduation rate is at 96.5%. I know a few years ago, we talked about African-American males being at 100%. We've now achieved 100% graduation rate for all African-American students, so very pleased with that. Our special ed graduation rate, the highest it's ever been, at 95.3%. And now, for two consecutive years, we've had 100% ELL graduation rate. In fact, I think since we've started a ELL program at Topeka West, we've not ever not graduated an ELL student.
And when did the program start, Mr. Dick?
Two years ago, officially, so...
So, Mr. Dick, what's a rough number, as I look at, so both ELL and African-American students?
Rough number?
I can kinda do the math myself on special ed, just assuming that if it were flat across all three high schools, although that's not the case, but for a rough estimate. But I asked that question, 'cause I wanted you to have the opportunity to say that, so people understand we're not talking about 10 students, but a big number.
Yeah. We don't have a lot of ELL students, but we do, we have 15 in this cohort.
Yes.
So, all in all, we have about 60 to 80 a year. In this graduation cohort that graduated, there were 15 in that cohort.
And African-American students?
African-American, we have 38, roughly, a little bit better than about 15% of our population in African-American students.
So... So, we're talking like 120 students in your, your four-year?
Eh, more like 200 in group or so.
Okay.
180 to 200 typically, yeah.
So...
So, yeah, it's not, we have two or three kids that are at 100%. There's, there's a little work to have to do there to achieve that, so we're pretty proud of those numbers. We, we work really hard at that, and relationships with kids, and doing everything we can to make sure they're successful. So, that's one thing that we're very proud of. And I should say, I, when you look at the graph over time, this class here was my fifth graduating class as principal. So, you can see, five years ago, we were at 86%. That was my first year as principal, and I really didn't have a whole lot to do with that. That was everybody before us. The second year, you know, were kids that were juniors, we didn't have a whole lot to do with. But by the time we'd had a couple of years to kinda work our system and work with kids, we jumped to 93.4. We hit 95. Now, really, to be honest, I was disappointed that we didn't go above 95 this year. I, we've had an increase every year, and I really wanted one. And we argued with KSD back and forth about a couple of students that we really thought should've been removed from our cohort. One that really actually never attended Topeka West, but there was some data in there and air. They belong to the district, but not us, and they won't remove a kid from your cohort if they... if they still belong to your district, they leave them with you. So had we been able to actually do that out of actual Topeka West students that really belonged to us, we're actually 95.6% this year. So even though it's not officially reported, now that you can't check. Yeah, I do the math every morning through. So I'm going to say 95.6, but if you go look it up, it's 95.
And so the next piece, he's going to share a little bit about systems that every high school is doing. And while Ms. Morsey will be speaking at the next meeting, she as well also increased Hope Street and Cap City. So here are some systemic things we are doing district-wide that we really contribute to the continued gain across the board.
So we started the system that we are most familiar with, that we call it our administrative scoreboard system, but really it's school-based weekly data tracking. We've talked about that at meetings before where, you know, every week, we're looking at attendance rate of students, the percentage of students that are passing all their classes, the number of kids that are on the ineligible list, and really hammering away and working hard at making sure you're at school and while you're there, you're passing your classes. And so we've put a lot of time and energy into those two things on a weekly basis, and we just kind of work that system week to week. As we've done that over the years, we've seen tremendous growth in our graduation rate and success, and now that is kind of a model that we use in all schools to some degree, as far as tracking data on a weekly basis, really just at the school level. Similar in a lot of ways to a data consult, just on a smaller week-to-week scale rather than the month to six weeks that we do a data consult on. We started senior spreadsheets and so really tracking hard on seniors and what their goals are in the future and where they want to go, what they want to do, what are we doing along the way to make sure that we've done everything we can so they can get there? So I think we're now in three solid years, four years now, of really having a good, solid program for senior spreadsheets and working that system throughout the year, every year. You know, we're pushing that down into juniors and even younger years now, so we have that built as they come into senior year. We already know most of these things about them. Makes it really easy when opportunities come up that we need to connect kids with that they're interested in, it's a real quick, easy way to go find the students that really need that opportunity. So if we're just talking about a college visit and it's KU coming to town, here's all the kids that want to go to KU, they're going to be here, we make sure they get there. If it's an opportunity to go to Advisors Excel and see something about finance or something in that world that kids are interested in, we have a ready-made list of kids ready to go that we can pull from to make sure they get that opportunity, or a speaker that comes to campus for some reason. So those things are really helpful for that. In the last few years, we've increased our alternative education options, so we've really expanded and put a push on summer school and make up a lot of ground with some students during summer school. We've got the Avondale Alternative School now. As part of that, we have our own online school where, in my belief over the years prior to having that, we lost a lot of kids as non-graduates who said they were going to online schools that we couldn't track. The big advantage, I think, to us having one is we keep track of them, they're still part of our district. So if that's not successful for them, we still have them in town and know how to get ahold of them. So I think that part has been a benefit to us in the last few years, to keep track of those kids and not just lose them. And then, you know, an expansion in all of our online courses and just really a belief system across the high school level of trying to be more flexible with students when we need to be and not so rigid that we can't meet their needs so much. So really trying to think a little more out of the box at how we meet whatever needs it is they have, whatever situation they're in, we can figure out a way to keep you connected to school and making some progress towards graduation. And I think across the board, we've all done that better in the last several years now. We've really increased the college visits and tours and actually taken kids off to campuses and other experiences they get just to get a little taste for what it is they think they want to do or the school they want to attend. And so that's been a big push in the last few years, it's helped with this. We've expanded our testing plans and been more consistent across the board in those opportunities. So kids, just by taking some of those tests, they get some opportunities sent to them based on how they scored and get some more opportunity that way. Concurrent credit is kind of varies across the board, as we all know, but increasing options there and getting kids connected to college and college credits a little sooner so that they have that in mind and they get some experience with college before they leave us. And then an increase in community partnerships, especially related to career success. And I'll just give an example today, one that's kind of new that we've been pushing on for a couple of years with our communities and schools programs. We've had off-and-on success with things around resume writing and applying for jobs and going through an interview process and doing mock interviews, but they're kind of hit and miss in how good they are. So when we, a couple of years ago, meeting with the community and schools people, I just asked for, can we find some way to do some of these things? They made a connection with Security Benefit, and so we started working with their human resources department about doing some of these things. Today, we took about 35 kids between the three high schools to Security Benefit for half the day, and they had the best program we've ever seen when it came to this. Their HR department put on a really nice day for the kids, they had breakfast for them, walked them through how to write a resume, what things you want to include on a resume, how would you word something on there to make it look better than, you know, all of that stuff. Clear through the interview process, what to wear, how to act, how to phrase things so you say it in a positive way without being, just the whole applying for a job, the things they have available to them there. They brought in three people on a panel at lunch to talk to them, they were graduates from each of our three high schools, to their experience through high school and how they got to where they're at today. They invited the president of their insurance division to come down and have lunch with them and talk about just opportunities at Security Benefit and getting into the workforce and doing those things, and really a great program. So just expanding more and more on those opportunities all the time to get students those opportunities, I think is great. So now we just have to try to scale that up and get more than 35 students to participate. It was really good. For the first time we did it, it was, it was pretty impressive.
So as Mr. Dick has shared, some of the strategies, as you all already know, we don't have T-Calc and just a variety of other things listed that we know have continued to encourage that success. The high school classes that are now in the middle school that we started three years ago, this will be the fourth year into that. And as a reminder, the ACT, the PSAT, and the SAT are all things that we pay for, and we've been doing that now for three years, thanks to Ms. Wallace and the title funds that have now been flexibly able to be used for those particular areas. And this year, we required the PSAT, which is why we paid for it as well. So again, the list goes on and on, but we are excited about the systemic movement and progress in all areas. And thank you, Mr. Dick, and again, congratulations. I believe last year and this year again, it seems as though he's outscored all schools, perhaps in Shawnee County. So congratulations.
One moment, Ms. Kirk.
Can't get away.
That's fine.
That's okay. You know, the very first thing I have out there is when you do, you're looking at your students weekly, there are things that are the flags, you know, absences, excessive absences, grades not looking good. So you get that information, then take us the next step. What do you have in school when you find these children who are not either coming to school like they should or who are just not making their grades? What do you do then?
So when that happens, so I'll kind of real quickly walk you through the process, or at least how we use it at Topeka West, and everybody does something a little bit similar. So on Fridays, we have our leadership team meeting, and we give the big-picture data out that week to the administrators and counselors for both divisions. So at Topeka West, we have two divisions now, split in two halves, two administrators, two counselors for each division. So they get their big school-wide data just by the kids in their alphabet, as far as their percentage of passing all their classes, their attendance rate, kids on the ineligible list, all that stuff. Then on Monday morning, we come together individually with each division and drill down a little closer on individual kids and what we're going to target for the week, really focusing on kids with attendance issues and at the time, kids who are failing classes. From there, the divisions then decide among their four, who's going to talk to which kid. And we do a little bit of that in that meeting, there'll be some kids that I'll take on to talk to, but we make sure, or try to be sure, that every kid who has an attendance issue or failing grade needs to talk to that week. And then from there, really, when you come to data consult and LR kind of came to one of ours last time and said, it is kind of impressive how well you know kids. You can't ask about a kid that somebody in that room can't answer any question you want to know. They know their history, they know what's going on with them, what happened in middle school, how high school's been, what's going on with their family. And really, we just work to make sure then, whatever is happening between the counselor, the principal, the social worker, school police, whatever it is we have to do, we're trying to find some strategy to make sure they stay engaged in school, which may be that it's not being at Topeka West and on our campus walking around, may not be the best thing for you. Maybe Oak Street's a better option, or Avondale, or if somebody wants to try online, we have that opportunity with everybody knowing that the door's open, come back, because most students don't do really well online. We need to keep them closer to us than that. So it's a whole myriad of things. I mean, it just kind of depends on a case-by-case, student-by-student basis, whatever, whatever it takes.
I was going to say, for a student who's failing, I'm thinking about besides their home issues and that sort of, but you certainly have, have issues with just understanding the subject matter, particularly if you're in math, because kids who've just somehow lost, never got hooked into the right understanding of mathematical principles, and they, you have to go back and kind of do that for some of these kids. Where does that come in? Do you have, the math teachers do this, or do you have a special?
We have math teachers do that. We're also fortunate that we have a couple of administrators who are math teachers. Our instructional coach was a math teacher. With math, sometimes it's just, they need to hear the same stuff from somebody else a different way. And so we try to find lots of people available to work with in math, whatever that is, hearing it a different way, having somebody else explain it to you. We do also have, especially in algebra classes and lower-level math classes, we'll use, we have a math aide program for upper-level students who are in math class that are in those classes, kind of as teachers' aides, they get credit for being a math aide, and they have some peer-to-peer with students helping them with math. So most of the time, we feel like we have some way that we can connect somebody to something. We do math, the math department is actually the only department that we pay to tutor after school. So we have after-school tutoring in math, and then every two weeks, we do what we call pizza to pass after school, where we have just, it was actually today. Any student that needs help, we sign them up, make sure they're connected to a teacher after school for two hours, they stay and go to tutoring. As long as they go to tutoring, we buy pizza for them in the cafeteria, kind of towards the end of that, and they all come together and have pizza.
So that, you should feed them, they'll come, that kind of, yeah.
That helps.
That helps. Thank you, thank you. That helps beyond what we see on the board in front of us. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Dr. Mickelson.
So I was fortunate to hear Mr. Dick speak at NOSED conference on some of these topics, especially the administrative scoreboard system, and I, listening to the audience at the NOSED conference, everybody walked away very impressed with how well you know your data and how well you know your students, so kudos to you. When you think about that 4.4% of kids that didn't graduate, what could, are there things that you regret not being able to do for, I mean, I realize some of those things are probably not in your control, and you get these kids for 30 days a year, and they come to school with.
So the interesting part for us, on the last two years that we've been at the 95% and better, almost all of the kids that have been non-graduates are free-lunch students. So socioeconomics plays a pretty big role, it appears, in the kids that we struggle the most to graduate. The other thing that's interesting to us is, most of the kids, I think all, I'd have to look really close to be sure, but I'm going to say all, transferred to us from somewhere else that don't graduate. So if you start with us and you stay with us for four years, and I know we have a lot of people who want, have the impression that we allow kids to kind of freely move around high schools and things like that, when you look at data and some of the information we know, so we've been talking about John Hattie and his work for a long time, transition, just simply moving between schools at any time, has a negative point-three effect size on kids. And we really see that when we talk about graduation and those things. You know, if I could, I know parents are trying to do what's best for their kids and what they think they need to do, but you know, the advice I'd want to say is, you need to, you really need to try to hold tight. When you get somewhere, you need to stay there and get connected and be involved in school and do everything you can there. Don't let the answer be, I need to go somewhere else, because we really struggle when you move between schools, that in part, between the socioeconomics and the transition between buildings. That seems to be, at least at Topeka West, our biggest factors for making it hard to get kids to graduate.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. McCarty.
I'd just add as a quick comment too, that I think that something distinctive about your school is the stable leadership and teaching staff as well, that there's also that kind of mobility that can affect student achievement. So the fact that you've been at the helm for multiple years and your staff obviously has confidence in you, and you've been able to, you don't have a very high teacher turnover.
We don't turnover very many teachers. It really, administratively, we've really had no turnover.
Yeah.
None of the time we've been there.
And I think all of that makes a difference.
Certainly helps. It's a, it's a big help. We're all on the same page, everybody understands what to do, I have complete confidence in them, and whatever situation they get in, they'll do the right thing for a kid and what we want them to do for a kid. I 100% believe that.
Well, keep us posted with what's on your wish list, if there are things that the board can provide to, to get to 100%.
I want 100%.
I know you do. Thank you. Very proud of what you've achieved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Next on the agenda is a discussion item, and this will be led by the Chamber in Downtown Topeka. And this is a presentation of the TIF that we've discussed with you all. So the microphone is yours.
Well, good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. I'm Vince Fry, Curtis Needen. For those of you that don't know me, I'm president and CEO of Downtown Topeka Incorporated. I'm also the senior vice president of the Greater Topeka Partnership. My organization, Downtown Topeka, has been in existence since 1964, and our goal basically is to ensure that our downtown is a center of a thriving regional economy. It's a center for culture, it's a center for residential, and it's a center for commerce. I've always said that a downtown represents a community's pride and prosperity, and for several decades, if you went downtown, you might not feel that way about our downtown, as many downtowns throughout the United States went downhill over the years when people moved to the suburbs, shopping malls were built, strip centers, and certainly that was the case too here in Topeka. In 2008, many of you might have participated in the visioning process for this community, and out of that process, thousands of citizens over several months, the number-one priority that they chose for the future of Topeka was a revitalized downtown. We have a slide here. We call this area, this district, the dynamic core, and it was created out of that visioning process, and it included downtown, no tow, and the riverfront. And that, that area became a very involved committee that was headed up by Mayor Walgas at the time, and eventually I took over the chair of that committee for heartland visioning. In 2017, the Chamber of Commerce in GoToPika conducted through a company called Market Street, a holistic economic development survey of this community, and asked several thousand citizens their concerns about the community, what would happen in the future that they felt needed to be addressed. Couple of things that came out of that that were really staggering. One was, of the people working in Shawnee County that make at least $40,000 or more a year, over 40% of those do not live in Shawnee County. Even more staggering, and I think of significance to this board, is when asked, parents, if they felt that upon graduation, their child would remain in Topeka, only 10% said their children expected to live in Topeka. Those are very staggering and disappointing things that we found. we found. And that led to what we now call Momentum 2022. My organization, back in January of 2018, merged with the Chamber of Commerce, GoToPika, and the Visit Topeka to form the Greater Topeka Partnership, to address some of the issues in this survey. We have five pillars that we're addressing through Momentum 2022. Develop ungrown talent, create vibrant and attractive places, grow a diverse economy, promote a positive image, and to collaborate for a strong community. In January of this year, we conducted through Development Strategies out of St. Louis, a market study of downtown. There's some statistics on the screen here that we found out through that study, that currently 23,000 jobs exist in our downtown, 900 housing units, 60% of the region's office space, and interestingly, I think, 24% of the jobs in the area are in less than 2% of the land area, which is the downtown. We also found in this market study, that over the next 10 years, downtown can support an additional 900 residential units, 690,000 square feet of retail, another 300,000 square feet of new or rehab office space, and at least 200-plus hotel rooms over those next 10 years. The survey also said that this potential is great, but it also will need incentives to make it happen. That's why this tax increment finance district is so important to us at Downtown Topeka Incorporated. And we really think, not only is it great potential for downtown, but it's great potential for USB 501. The TIF district that we've outlined encompasses what is identified as an enterprise zone as far back as 1992, as well as what is now called an opportunity zone, which was identified by the federal and state government this year. To be considered an enterprise zone or an opportunity zone, it has, the area has to be considered underdeveloped or blighted. And that is what we are defined as still in our downtown. So, Curtis and I, a couple of weeks ago, were able to watch you all as you celebrated the great success of your $143 million fund project. And you asked voters several years ago to have faith in you as you went forward with this project, knowing that at the end, the result would be something that would be beneficial for generations to come. And basically, that's what this Dynamic Core and the TIF is from our standpoint. And we're asking you to have that same faith in what we're asking as we develop our downtown, and our entire community will benefit from it. I know you'll have questions about how the TIF process works, and so Curtis is gonna give you some opportunities to answer those questions.
One second. Ms. Kirk, would I, I would have a quick question.
You, you mentioned two things, and I got the enterprise zone, but you didn't, I forgot what else you said.
The opportunity zone.
Say that one more time.
Opportunity zone.
Opportunity zone.
Yes. And those are designated by the state and federal governments, based upon the statistics of the areas.
So, those are zones that are already identified for the...
Exactly. And our TIF district overlaps those zones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Vince. So, my name's Curtis Sneeden, and I am with the Chamber of Commerce. And Mrs. Kirk, I would be happy to spend more time exploring those with you. The opportunity zones are a fascinating new federal situation. It has to do with the 2017 changes to the tax, the income tax code, but they are a really intriguing tool to hopefully draw investment to the area. It overlaps, but it is a kind of a different sphere of activities. And we're excited that all these things are coming into place at the same area. I'd love to follow up with you on that. But following some very tough scheduling negotiations with Mr. Robbins, I think I'd probably better stick to the TIF thing, and we could talk about that at another meeting. As I listened to Vince's comments, I was struck to some degree by what you might call a regret. And, and that is that, I think he's laid out a compelling vision for you. He's given you a sense of what our organizations have been working on, what we can see out in the future. We're excited about the potential that's waiting for us, and we're eager to get moving with the tools we think will unleash that potential. We, we've been working on this, you know, for most of 2019. We consider the schools to be our partners in what we're trying to do. We all know that we cannot achieve our mission of creating a more prosperous future unless you're right there with us. You're turning out our future workforce. You're a critical component. And you wouldn't know it, but I have told state legislators over at the State House many times how important it is that our votes are latched together. We're all trying to row in the same direction. And yet, here we are, and this is the first opportunity we, as a body, have had to share this vision with you. I guess my regret, I'm sorry that this is November instead of March. So, let me start with that, so that you understand where we're, where I'm coming from. I very much appreciate the opportunity to stand before you tonight and have this discussion. And we're committed, as we work on such projects going forward, to be very deliberate about making sure that you all are some of the first people at the table with us going forward. Let's talk about tax increment financing. You all deal with a very complicated school finance formula. You deal with an amazing budget. I presume that you have a level of understanding of these sorts of operations. And so, I don't wanna sound too rudimentary. You deal with, frankly, more complex things than Vince and I do on a day-to-day basis. But what I have found in talking through and working on this TIF project, is that it is very easy, unless you're dealing with this stuff day-to-day, it's easy to get a little bit confused about some of the basics. So, if you will allow me just a second or two, I'd like to make sure we're all dealing with the same sort of, you know, conceptual playing blocks, so that we're all speaking the same language and understanding the same thing. So, let's just start at the beginning. Tax increment financing is a tool to encourage development and investment in downtown. It's one of the tools we hope to deploy to bring about that vision Vince has just told you about. The basic concept is that a property owner has property in the district, and there on the left, you can see that little blue square. I developed this slide, so I know it's not very impressive. I'm not a graphic designer, but hopefully it gets the point across. That property, before it's developed, is, just say, a beat-up building downtown somewhere. The value of that property is whatever it is. The developer does work on that property, you know, maybe has some of the sewer lines rerun, fixes up parts of it, builds a parking garage. Whatever he or she does causes the value of that property to go up. After that has taken place, the tax due on the higher value of that property will be X plus there, whatever's in that right column. What TIF is about is potentially negotiating the reimbursement of that developer for some of their expenses from some of that yellow box there on the top. So, it's important to keep in mind that the original value isn't affected. The property taxes that are coming off of that still go where they were always going. All we're talking about is the incremental there. So, that would be a foundational concept that we wanna have in mind from the outset. We're talking about negotiating a portion of the incremental taxes. Now, I'd love to, when we're not under a time crunch chat with each of you, my guess would be that when you talk to your friends at parties about school finance, you probably find yourself re-explaining things time and again, and walking them through the complexities of that. Vince and I have discovered the same thing when it comes to these incentive programs. Let me very quickly just remind you of what a TIF is not. A TIF is not a community improvement district. Those are called CID's. You've seen those in the news. That's not what we're pursuing here. It's not a star bond, which is a type of tax incentive program. It's wholly different, though. It has to do with tourism and sales tax. And it's not a historic tax credit. So, these are all concepts that come up in the same conversation, but it's important to keep them separate. And the only reason I put that bullet point in there was because I, I've had many conversations with people who are knowledgeable in this area, and it's still easy to kind of get those boxes mixed up. The TIF is, is not a new tax. Vince has strolled down the street in downtown and chatted with his members about it, and invariably, one of them will say, why are you raising my taxes on me? It's not a tax. It's not a new tax. It's not a grant of money to developers. There are programs that amount to that, but that's not what TIF is. It's about the developer doing work that improves the property and then negotiating the reimbursement of some of their expenses. TIF doesn't transfer any existing funding from any other program. Remember those blue boxes down there at the bottom? Those existing funds keep going where they were originally going. And finally, TIF is not a property tax abatement, in the sense that taxes are being paid now, and after the abatement is established, those taxes aren't, are no longer being paid. It's about that yellow box, the new value, the new taxes that we're not seeing now. I hope you will not feel that that was too rudimentary. And I apologize if it felt that way, but again, as I noted, it seems to be helpful to start with the basics every time. So, that's what we're pursuing. What will the boundaries of this district be? I will tell you that the map you see on the screen and in your packets looks a little different from what we started with. It has shrunk somewhat. It starts down 17th Street, it runs to the river, it includes everything between Topeka Boulevard and Adams. That is more or less that dynamic core that Vince told you about. It did include Noto when we started this project, for a reason I'll chat with you about in just a second. We, I mean, we're eager to include the areas north of the river in the development and that vision that we have for Topeka, but there are some pretty important technical reasons why TIF probably isn't the best fit for Noto at this point in time. So, and we're also potentially going to be making some adjustments to other parts of the border. There are various sort of local reasons why individuals would rather not be included in the district, and we're trying to accommodate those needs. So, I would like to spend just another minute or two going into some topics that I think will be of particular relevance to our discussion with you. The first one is a reminder that under the TIF statutes, a special fund is required into which those incremental tax dollars are placed, and they are to be used in the TIF district. I think it's helpful to take a second and compare scenarios. We've read about TIFs in the newspaper, for example, 29th and Fairlon, where the new theater just opened up, and Johnny Stavert and all that. That was a TIF. That's a fairly standard scenario. The developer had some property or was in the process of acquiring some property, and they had dreams and visions for that, for that property. So, they came to the city and said, well, let us establish a district here. And within this district that we own, we propose to build the various things that our architects have drawn up for you. There wasn't really any, you know, difference between the district and the project. They were, they're usually kind of come in as a package. And so, that's, that's the way you normally experience these things. We're trying a different approach. We're trying to set the table by establishing a district and inviting developers to come forward with their project ideas. We have a high level of confidence that, that they will, that there are a lot of terrific ideas out there amongst our, our local developer community and others outside of our community who are watching. Setting up that district is a way of saying, Topeka's open for business, and we're hoping that, we believe strongly, it will attract development in the area. So, we're setting up a district, and the project plans will be coming later. And in that sense, this feels a little bit unicornish by comparison to, say, the We Field Village project. As the values of the property within the district go up, according to state statute, those extra, that incremental value does have to be put into a special fund, and it has to be used within the district. Ordinarily, those funds would be used to reimburse the developers, but until there are projects, those funds, there won't be any developers to reimburse. So, there are other ways to use those funds. We've actually had some great conversations with our friends at, at City Hall. I say our deputy city managers here, thank you, Doug, for being here. There are plenty of good ways to use those funds within the district to do the sorts of things that a developer might have done if they were doing a project, fixing up the sidewalks, working on infrastructure, helping with landscaping, even acquiring some right-of-way for a highway project in downtown. Those, those funds can be, can be put to good use that will benefit the entire community. Briefly, the Neighborhood Revitalization Act, I won't dwell on this, but you have probably heard and might be interested in knowing, that there is currently in place an incentive type of program, we call the NRA, within this same area. And we've learned that mathematically speaking, those two programs can't coexist. They, they both involve handing back a dollar of property tax to a property owner, and you can only hand the same dollar back once. So, you can't have both programs at the same time. But we've worked very hard to come up with some creative ways to make sure that these, these programs can sort of dovetail, and, and the community can still benefit from each of those. I will tell you briefly that the NRA is the main reason we took Noto out of the mix, because probably the Neighborhood Revitalization Act program is a better fit for Noto at this point. And if we were to roll in a TIF district over the top of them, it'd be kind of like throwing a carpet over a candle. It would sort of snuff out the benefits potentially of the Neighborhood Revitalization Act. So, if anybody asks you, that's why Noto got taken out. And finally, I would like to address a concern that was raised with us, and it has to do with the seeming permanence of this district. I will tell you that generally speaking, the idea is that when you set up a TIF district, it's intent, you think of them as ongoing. You put them in place, and there really isn't any sense of ending them, okay, on, on paper. But that doesn't mean they last forever. It just means you, that's not how you set them up. And the reason is that, as developers come forward with their ideas and they negotiate with the city for their reimbursements, they then turn around and finance their projects on the basis of what they've been able to work out. It would impede their ability to do their work if they had to tell the financing world that every year that passes, their opportunity to, to work with a project in downtown Topeka is getting a little bit shorter. The amortization period on their financing would be shrinking. If we said the TIF district were gonna expire in 2030, say, that would sort of cripple our, the developer's ability to finance their projects, fair enough. So, you don't usually set up a TIF district with an end date. However, the resolution that is being proposed, that the city council will be taking up early next month, has a couple of provisions that I think you would want to know about pertaining to the life of the district. One of them is that, if we set this thing up, and we go for a period of years and nothing happens, if downtown Topeka and the chamber are wrong, and we've underestimated what the developers are waiting to do, then after a period of years, it will be possible for the city council to fold this thing up and go on. And the fiscal implications of having had a district will just be reversed at that point. So, if this thing is a failure, it won't, it'll be, it'll be, we'll be able to take it apart. The other provision that's putting, that's being proposed to put into the resolution is a reminder that any future city council has the ability to dissolve the TIF district. Now, it will be necessary for them, if they choose to dissolve the TIF district at some point, to ascertain what deals are still in the air, who's still being reimbursed, what's, what's the state of play? Are there still any jets in the sky? Those jets need to be allowed to land, but then the thing can be dissolved. So, I mean, suppose we're all quite right about this, and development goes haywire, then potentially 15, 20 years, it'll make all the sense in the world to sort of pull the blinds, say, we're not open for business, we've got enough, and then there'll be a process for, you know, dissolving the district. So, I wanted you to appreciate that, even though you don't really build these things with end dates on them, that doesn't mean they last forever. And we're actually taking special measures here to try to, you know, drive that point home. Vince made, I think, built a... Vince made, I think built a pretty compelling vision for you. I hope you agree that if this thing plays out the way we feel, we're confident that it will, it will bring more visitors to our town, it will bring more employers, like security benefit to our town, more potential community partnerships, and perhaps most importantly, to all of us, more families. And so, I guess our point of view would be that this isn't just about town, town, it just isn't about the chamber, it's about the entire community. And if those things play out, then we are all going to be better off for it. So thank you for your time and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Sneed and Mr. Frye for coming to speak to us. And I think I, before I even ask any questions, I'll say what I said in the last meeting. The fact that we get to have this conversation with you, as you noted, I'm sure it may be later than any of us when I did too, but I personally consider it a movement of very good faith and it makes me feel good about the city that I live in. So, as, as we know, we're pretty much all, as you stated, rode in the same direction. We've just gotta go figure, we can't get our giant organizations, you know, all the time moving and using. One question, and there's no real challenge in this question, you will have to interpret this more so as being not having a deep knowledge of these programs. I'm curious about the, so I get the concept of the TIF not having an end date listed, which, you know, on the one hand, you would say, "Oh, you put a definite end date, a date certain," would encourage people to try to jump in and do something, but then on the other hand, that there's the financing issue and, you know, and as yours would like to know that, as you pointed out, that their, you know, amortization is going to, you know, not shrink and the possibility for collecting is going to shrink every, every year. So, I understand that. I'm curious though about the two provisions that you mentioned that you put in, in that it is possible even now, it sounds like, for a council to dissolve the TIF district if they feel like nothing is happening with it. I don't actually know the answer to this question, that's why I'm asking you. Has that ever happened? You know, and how often does that happen, I guess? Is that a common?
Well, I can't speak to the frequency of it, but I know that there was a TIF district set up kind of over by Adams and Fifteenth, wasn't it? And I don't know whether nothing ever, a develop, a project plan never came forward or it didn't play out, but that one got dissolved. Basically, nothing happened with it, is that right, Doug? That's Doug Gerber, Deputy City Manager. Thank you for being here to give me hand signals on the, on the details. But yeah, that's an example.
Can I ask Doug where he went to graduate school? What did he want to say in that?
I love the Brown University City.
Oh, very nice.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, never mind. No, you don't, you don't. No, I'm joking. If you, if you have something to add, of course, more color and detail to the question, then you will, so all of our members can.
I, you know, as Doug approaches, I would note that we've had some conversations, you know, Mr. Woods, in terms of the encouragement of early prompt action by developers, there are ways to set up the policy around this district so that as they negotiate their deals with the city, those who come sooner may be, you know, vying for juicier barriers, various than those who come later. That's all part of, you know, what can be set up as we go forward. It's, it's not an inherent part of the district, it would be sort of the rules of play that are put in place. So there are ways to encourage these developers to, "Come on, let's go, let's get moving with this thing."
Thank you, Curtis, thank you, board. We did, the city council, the governing body dissolved a TIF district in 2015. I erected the city in 2014 and we had a district that existed, as Curtis noted, about Fifteenth and Adams, and there was nothing happening. The developer had no interest, the city had no interest in continuing it. And so, the body took action to dissolve that. And as Curtis mentioned, we did have some funds collected from that district. There had been some increment generated and those funds were reimbursed to the appropriate taxing entities on a pro-rata basis. So funds went back to the city, went back to the county, went back to the school district as a result of that district dissolution. The other thing I might say, just add a little more color to this, is distinguishing, distinguishing between a TIF district and a project plan, there is a 20-year limit on a project plan itself. The district has no limit, but a project has a 20-year limit.
Other questions? Dr. McCarty?
Is it customary for that to be 20 years? Like, are there other possible time limits for that? Is there room for negotiation there? So you're saying for each, for each individual project, if somebody comes in within the district and improves a property, that the clock starts and at some point, the increment stops? And right, right now, you're recommending for this, that it's 20 years?
I'm saying for each individual project.
Project, right.
Statutory limit. Now, that's going to vary by project, whether that goes to the max or whether it's some, something less than 20 years. As you know, we have a number of TIF districts in place right now and they're mostly in their infancy, but initial projections of revenue show that those districts could end early. And so if we negotiate a payment upfront with any developer that we have a project with from a city perspective and cap those, those amounts that they can be reimbursed for. And so if the district generates, you know, just goes nuts and, you know, the assess violation really increases, that increases the likelihood, of course, that that payment can be made earlier, more quickly. And so that potentially allows the district to be dissolved soon. The district and the plan, as Curtis noted, those are typically simultaneous. In this case, they're not.
You said the 20-year length is a statutory limit, so that's...
On project plans, yes, which is separate and distinct from the district.
Ms. Kirk, do you have anything?
Since I'm not in finance at all, I need, and all initials kind of get confusing after a while. When you, I looked at the CID and it said Community Improvement District and then we have the NRAs, which I, Neighborhood Revitalization, I guess it means, Neighborhood Improvement Districts, I can't even remember. But anyway, is that an NRA the same as a CID?
No, I appreciate that question because that is a completely fair comment about these programs, sort of, you can get a little snowblind with them, can't you? I just came from a military luncheon today and these military guys were throwing out so many acronyms that, but, you know, by the end, I just, I had no concept what we were talking about. So it's a very fair question. Community Improvement Districts. The reason they always come up in these conversations is that they can be layered on top of, you could, you could have a TIF and a CID, in fact, oftentimes we do. So they come up in the same conversation, but they're not the same thing. What a CID is, is that the developer reaches agreement with the city and the city council to charge a little bit of extra sales tax on the transactions that take place within their district. And, and those monies are used to reimburse that developer for other types of expenses.
Okay, so we have, I remembered out there on Lomaca Road, somebody had a, has a, you're paying them more sales tax, I'm sure on the other side of the street, something because of this CID or something similar to that.
Right.
Right, okay.
And then the NRA is a really nifty program that enables really any property owner, as I understand it, it's residential or commercial, right, who wants to fix up their property. When they do, they can receive a fairly substantial property tax rebate, up to 95% or something for the first five years, am I getting this? So they get a pretty good tax break on their properties based upon the degree to which they've increased the value of their house or their, you know, tavern or whatever it is.
Or building downtown, right?
Yeah, yeah, or building downtown.
So that's the one that's limited, right? The time limited that...
Yeah, it's a 10-year rebate.
And it doesn't require any kind of governing body action?
It's relatively administrative. The body had to establish the areas where you could get those or set up the ground rules, but acquiring the rebate is relatively administrative. So what we have done to make sure that we don't inadvertently sort of deprive the community of that very useful tool is this, the legal description of this boundary actually has a bunch of holes in it consisting of the properties that are currently taking advantage of the NRA. There are about 1,600 parcels up there, 71 of them have NRA tax rebates in flight. We don't really know, we weren't, the data didn't tell us how much more rebate is coming to them, but they're getting the rebate. So we've drawn up the boundary so that if you held it up to the light, it had a lot of pinholes in it, those 71 districts are specifically excluded from the TIF district. And we're also developing a process so that if you own property in the district and you realize that, that NRA tax rebate would have been a better deal for you, there, there will be a way to go downtown and fill out a form that Doug's working on and really fairly simply remove your property from the TIF district. That's an important tool, it's used by a number of different types of, you know, it's not big, small, it's everybody. And so, we want to try to live together with that.
Mr. Robbins, do you have something to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't really have a question, but you know, as we have touched on the subject of NRAs, administration would like an opportunity to share with our visitors and with the public in general, just why this entire topic is so sensitive to us. So I'd like to ask Mr. Minkie, if he would, to approach the microphone. And we have some information that we'd like to share, like I said, for our visitors and also for our board. I think it would help explain why it was even necessary and certainly welcome that we had guests here this evening to give us a little deeper explanation and understanding of what TIF is all about and what is being proposed and being considered by our city.
All right, good evening. As the deputy superintendent explained, he asked me to put together some data on our financial position now that we've had September 20th. That's, that's our magic day, we count kids, it's super important. And that first slide, and the board has this in front of them, is just a snapshot of enrollment over the past five years. This is straight FTE, excludes four-year-old at-risk virtual and CAMHS is the program at Fort H State. We send one or two kids a year out to the Science Technology Program. September 20, these are all September 20 count dates, the first four, first three columns, I'm sorry, are audited numbers and these are out of the SO-66 Superintendent's Report. September 20, 2016, 13,252 kids. September 20, 2017, 12,977 children. September 20, 2018, 12,730 FTE. And as of September 20, this is an unaudited number on our SO-66, 12,485. And Mr. Kip's pretty good, that number will hold up after our audit this month with KSDV probably plus or minus a point or two. So you can see, we've, we've got a trend, pretty steady decline of 1.9 to 2% FTE per year. That last column is just a project, a projection for 9/20 that I did, just using an average of, of what the previous four years were. So that 9/20, 2020 obviously isn't here, it's just my projection, but based on what we've seen the last four years, FTE. So, if we're going to roll the screen, the next page, how does that impact the district? And again, this is straight foundation state aid. We, we used to be base state aid per pupil, now we're foundation state aid per pupil. It's the same thing. So it, it is that FTE multiplied times the foundation state aid per pupil. We get the best of the most recent two years or a three-year average, okay? So the blue is a representation of the enrollment times foundation state aid. That, the orange marker represents if our enrollment would have stayed, sitter's prayer of it's just the same, 13,252, we wouldn't have lost a kid, we wouldn't have gained a kid. It just represents those dollars if our enrollment would have stayed stable, okay? So we have increasing state aid, foundation state aid per pupil for 2020, we're at 4,436. 2021, that'll go to 4,569. 2022, projected at 4,706. For 2023, 4,846. After 2023, the state law provision is for any increase in state aid would be adjusted to the CPI after 2023, okay? So, the, the state aid increase, you can see, we don't get as big a push from that foundation state aid increase because of the declining enrollment. And, and the opportunity really is represented there each year. This year, 1.2 million with current audited numbers. Next year, our state aid would go from 57 foundation aid, this is no waiting, no special aid, it's just foundation state aid from 57.5 to 58. But if our enrollment would have stayed at that 13,252, that represents about $2.3 million of state aid that would be gained because of declining enrollment. So, foundation state aid is going up for sure and we sure appreciate those additional dollars, but we do not get the same amount of push as if our student counts would remain steady or even maybe even a slight increase. We have a trend of some pretty, you know, 2% a year decline in enrollment. And that is impactful on our foundation state aid. Anybody having questions related to that slide? The next slide is just that time of year with audits and this will be relevant with our 2019 audit and move forward for our 2020 financing. This is our certification for valuation and our mill levy. And I know it's teeny tiny, I hope you could read it on yours though, on the Code 99 that we published in the newspaper back in August. We certified the budget. We had estimated 50.691 total mills for the district. Our certification came in at 50.563 mills, so we're just under what was published back in August and wanted to share that with you with the valuations. And then the final slide represents another audited item that does end up on our audits now and that is the impact of evaded or rebated taxes that these gentlemen were talking about, IRBs and NRAs, and this is just a snapshot of history, 2017, 2018, 19, and a projection for 20. The first two numbers are audited, 2017 and 2018. 2018, taxes collected, not distributed to the district from NRAs. 2018, taxes collected not distributed to the district from NRA's amounted to about 903,000. In 2018, that audited number was a little over 1.7 million. The blue represents an IRB, and that's what was for a large hospital, and that will continue for a while. 2019, I got the numbers from the county, 1.764. But those aren't audited numbers. Our auditors are here this month, and then projected for 2020, 1.9 million.
Just a comment. Man, this is, this is the one that kills us when we look at, this is money that property tax revenue that we will not see probably for 10 years, every year. And this is, you know, audited 1.7 million last year. Assuming it's going to be 1.76 million this time around. I mean, these are huge hits when you look at what's happening because of the, it hurts us when you look at we're decreasing all the problems that we're having. And I think this is why we get so anxious. And I think that this is kind of what prompted, I mean, the TIF program, I don't know how much unrealized benefit we're, from the one up, you've got 29th and Fairlon, that goes for 20 years. I mean, they're hoping that it won't take that long or it's going for longer than 20 years. There's no, there's no, there's no, and then strictly 20. Okay, then it's, so that, that's a huge area there that we're not going to be seeing. And what was there before, I'm sure, wasn't reaping a whole lot of tax, but it did for a while and it was, you know, but it died off as many strip malls do. So I guess we just get really, really, really concerned. And to be honest with you, in our, in looking at what's possible, that we don't have any control over what happens with NRA's, national revenue bonds, any of those things. We have no control over the loss of those funds. That's set up by statute in the state level, right? We do have some control, I understand, over TIFs. And as an entity, we could pass a resolution opposing it, and that would kill the TIF, I understand. So we didn't know that when we first talked to you. And I don't think there's anybody here that wants it, wants to have that kind of thing happen. We don't want to impede the development of our community. But when you see what we're looking at here in terms of the loss to the district every year, it's rather large. And we're a district that has a lower assessed valuation than the state average, so we even get a boost for the state, not a hundred percent rebate, but we get some back to compensate for the fact we have lower assessed valuation for students than, let's say, Auburn, Washburn or someplace like that in the same county. So we're anxious. And I guess, you know, part of what I'm looking at this is that this isn't a school district problem. This is a community problem. And I'm wondering whether or not, we're talking to the chamber, we're talking to downtown Topeka, whether we can talk about some kind of a plan where we can together go to our state legislature and say, we have to do something. Because this is what's happening to our community as a result of these tax abatements, really the big ones, some of the tax abatements. The TIF as it stands now isn't that much of a threat rate to us, or at least we do keep getting what we're getting from the downtown area. But it's not, it would just be adding another straw to what we might potentially get. And so I guess I'm just throwing out to you to think about this. I mean, there have been efforts to, in the legislature, and when I was there, Patrick was there, and we know that there have been efforts to try to get the legislature to take a look at the problems that these create for school districts. We have no place else to go. You know, if it's within our school district, these things are happening. And the problem is that we are the, we're the district where all the poor people live. Now, a big charge, a big chunk of poor people live in Topeka Public Schools. And so there needs to be all sorts of supports and help to make life better for people who live there. We understand that. But we have less capacity to absorb those than other places. So I guess I'm saying is there's something that we can do together with the city and the chamber and the school district, going to legislature and say, there has got to be some way to exempt school districts from these property tax abatements. And I, because I don't, we don't want to say we're going to write up, do a resolution and destroy your plans. I guess we hope you can put your plans on hold for a little bit longer until we have a chance to see whether or not we can have some success, and you're willing to work with us in this effort. And I'm just throwing that out to you. Because I mean, it just hurts to look at this. I haven't told all my colleagues yet. I'm just throwing this out. We're going to be having a discussion later on about our one voice statement that we make as county school districts. Nobody else is probably facing this kind of problem that we are. So I don't know what's going to happen when we have that discussion, but I think it's something we need to talk about desperately without hurting, without hurting your good plans. I'm just, I'll just stop here and let this, let me else talk.
I appreciate that a great deal. I think Vince and Mike and Doug do as well. In the same sense that I hope our presentation helped broaden your understanding of the objectives of our organizations, these slides and what you've just said, Mrs. Kirk, are very, very helpful to helping us sort of see this situation through your eyes. So thank you very much for all of that. I guess first of all, what I would say is that I would love to get ahold of your legislative agenda and sit down with you and whoever else would be the relevant people and look for ways that we can collaborate on something. I don't know what that would look like, but let's set that up next week as far as I'm concerned. Because it would, I hope, be helpful to you to know that in the past, our chamber has published agendas for the legislature which note, you know, the importance of our schools and our community and our healthcare system, et cetera. So that would not be a big step out of our lane. Let's see what there is to collaborate on. I guess before Mr. Morse, who's the chair of DTI, comes up, I would like to just note that, big picture, we're talking about declining students enrollment. I mean, Doug on it, we want the exact same thing. This whole initiative, our organization is calculated to try to bring more people here, more people, more families, and more students. So we couldn't be more aligned around that. And then finally, just a reminder, sort of a technical reminder, you already alluded to this, but you know, the tax abatements are one thing. That's not what we're talking to you about. Those NRA's and the TIFs are about new value that isn't here already. And you already pointed that out. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I just said there that, but I wanted to, this is, I'm sorry.
When you say we're anxious, I really feel that. I appreciate your explanation of that. Mr. Morse?
Good evening. I'm Mike Morse, I'm the current chair of Downtown Topeka, Inc. I'm a graduate of Whitsun, Landon, and Topeka West, NKU, Fall Chalk.
Thank you, thank you. You know, I, for some reason, I just...
I'm a Charger. And it was fun to see the report about the Chargers. When I was a Charger, we were 6A. And my graduating class was 390 in my graduating class. He's talking about 200. We are all the same team. When we recruit talent, when we recruit businesses, if mama bear's not happy, you're not moving there. If mama bear's not happy with education, our kids are going to get, they're not moving there. Period. So we are a team. We all are working on the same area. You don't get people to move without being confident in their education. It's just not. We don't get people to move and occupy downtown without wanting to be there. And what we've done with the Cyrus and the Pennant and the Iron Rail and the Plaza, we want to create vibrancy. We want those graduates, those 18-year-olds to choose to live in Topeka. When they say 10% of the people want to live in Topeka, I want 20, I want 30, I want 40, I want 50% to want to choose to live in Topeka because it's such a vibrant place, what a great place to live. And so it's all of us, and they live there because of education opportunities, because of employment opportunities. So how do we do it? And that's what it is. And so when we led with apology, that's the apology, is we've not been here as the same team, and we've not had this discussion with you enough. And we met with a smaller group of the board a month ago, and I said, you know, I want a board member from 501 to all of the downtown people. I think we failed in communication between each other. I want to solve that, and I'm the chair, so I can solve that. So from my position, this is an invitation to any of you, our new board members, we need to do better. Because we are all on the same team. So every year you lose 2% of people. Enrollment at Martha Earle when I was a senior in 1990 was, they were a 4A, I think. And now they're a really big 6A. How do we get people to move back to the core? Right? We had, in order to increase your enrollment, we have to get people to move back to the core. How do we do it? We do it with great education. We do it with creating places where people want to live. We do it with creating places where people want to invest. We do it with places where people want to put their business. So you know, this year, we're all talking the same thing. How do we do it? We've proven ways not to do it. I think we've done that. So we're going to try something different. The TIF is different, but it is a big game changer. We are not chasing little deals. The TIF only works, the TIF didn't, wouldn't work for the Cyrus. Okay? How big that project is, you look at the Cyrus Hotel, 110 rooms, all the main space, they would not, they did not use a TIF. They could have. They'd have to have a district to do it. They could have got a TIF. They didn't. So understand, when we're talking about TIF, we're not talking about little deals. We're talking about major change. Because TIFs are infrastructure. TIFs are parking garages, TIFs are sewer lines, water lines, streets, roads. Downtown has a lot of streets, roads, and sewer lines already, and we're pretty fully developed. It worked at Meat Hill because an entire 14 acres had to be developed, and that's different. We're pretty well-developed. So the TIF is something, game changer, comes to town. And we're talking, can we get a developer redo a 10-story tower and put housing into it? And put a park, but that doesn't do it. They need to put a, build a parking garage. The parking garage is the TIF worthy. And that's, those are the things that we're talking about is, we're not, the TIF is not a, it's just not a tool, but it really isn't going to make much of an impact. We pull out all the NRP stuff because the Pennant, the rail, used NRA. I have an office down town that used NRA. Most of those programs are already in place for NRA, and that's why I know to us pulling that. So the TIF is, we want, we need, because we want to try something different. We want to try to chase a big game. We're at the point in time we want to chase big developers and outside money. And our local developers asked us to chase outside money because we're tired of being the same guys, and we know who our guys are right now, they've done all the work. We need to try to bring some fresh money in. So that's the reason for the TIF, it's a different tool, is try something different. That's, that's why we're chasing it. But that doesn't change the discussion of how do we grow? How do we get people to move back to, how do we get families to move back to? And that's where we need to do better, communication, and if, you know, let's talk about what we are doing. Because it is, I tell the story all the time, the first city I went to, friend of a city visitor, was Oklahoma City, the second. And they did, they have math program, metropolitan area projects. The very first math program was downtown, and the very second one was schools. They passed one cent sales tax for five or six years, they paid for all this side gam town. They did the basketball arena, they did all that stuff they did. And the second was schools. And they passed a tax that focused on every school in the county. And you know, this quality economic development is hand in glove with education, and we know that. So we don't ever think we don't appreciate it and understand it, but then we just, I leave with an apology for not communicating this order with you.
And I'll just sum it up and we'll move on, let you guys go. But the couple of things that we thought were missing was talking to us, and we thank you for coming and speaking to us. And then going to Mr. Robbins and Mr. Minky for how these type of things affect us, and so a better communication, which you're already alluding to, and I'm sure we can find a board member that would be interested in surveying on your group. So thank you very much for coming in. Moving along, we will go to major maintenance plan.
Mr. President, distinguished board members, thank you for allowing me to present the major maintenance plan for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. I promise my presentation will be a lot less scientific and straightforward. Pretty much what I have in front of me is a $4.5 million plan. $500,000 of that we have set aside that will come out of data consult meetings at all our different elementary, middle, high schools, and we will identify project needs within that $500,000. And then the rest is spelled out with the $4 million, which all go in order on that. At Highland Park High School, we're looking at finishing out the roof replacement above the freshman academy. We're looking at a large asphalt replacement plan with the north parking lot, the daycare parking lot, some rooftop replacement units above the music building and the media center, and then some drain line and floor replacement that will be necessary to accommodate a new dishwasher in the kitchen area. Topeka High, we will continue painting on the inside and probably with a focus inside the gymnasium first, and then whatever else I have left to continue throughout the building. Finishing out the chandelier access project, and that project will actually finish out after the winter break. That's going to allow us to basically bring all the chandeliers down from the auditorium to ground level. And so we have now become, or have been able to achieve a major safety plan, never having to get above the auditorium. And that's a good thing. At Topeka West, we are going to have to replace the boilers there. We've done it at Highland Park, we've done it at Topeka High. Now at Topeka West, that obviously is a very large expense at the high schools to do that, and so we're moving along. We need to paint sand and do some repair to the main gymnasium floor there. A lot of that is just due to the age and some other things. We have to do a ramp replacement outside the theater arch classroom. We have some structural issues that need to be taken care of. And then finishing up with the steam piping replacement. A lot of that, in addition to making it more efficient, is we have better access to get underneath the building to be able to, you know, do all the maintenance that's necessary on a long-term basis. Chase Middle School, replacing a boiler. Eisenhower Middle School, doing an air conditioning replacement project. Eisenhower and Jardine, which we started last year, again, a lot of the access was underneath with the steam tunnels, and so we are improving not only the efficiency at both finishing out Jardine and starting Eisenhower, but that it'll be easier access to work on a regular basis. French Middle School, we're going to start with some floor and carpet replacement. I already mentioned that Jardine, finish out the air conditioning project, and then we have to replace the grease traps and do some underground piping along with that. And then we have to replace the grease traps and do some underground piping along with that. Landen, we're going to start locker replacement. Depending on how the bids come in, we'll probably start in the locker rooms and then move out into the actual hallways that the students use as their school lockers. Highland Park Central, replacing smoke detectors. We're over time trying to improve all our fire alarm systems throughout every single building. And that's just kind of, you know, part of that process. Doing some roof replacement amongst the main building. We replaced the annex roof last year. Lowman Hill, doing some ceiling and light replacement inside, primarily inside the classrooms. And a little bit of carpet and floor replacement. Some floor replacement at McCarter Elementary School. We obviously one major window door replacement project. And this will be at McKeckren Elementary School this year. Meadows, we have to replace a damaged fence that's adjacent to one of our neighbor's property. And so we decided that we would do that with major maintenance funds. Some concrete replacement around the perimeter of the school. And then some, we have to replace the hot water tanks at all the magnet schools. So you'll see that at both, at Scott and Williams as well. Roof replacement at Quincy. Boiler replacement at Randolph. And we have, are going to finish out the parking lot on the west side of Ross, which is gravel right now. Scott, some additional floor replacement, asphalt replacement in the playground area. Already mentioned the hot water tanks. State Street, finishing out the remaining unit vents that are left. And then the chiller replacement. Williams, some asphalt replacement in the playground area. Carpet replacement in the media center. And again, I mentioned the hot water tank replacement. At Burnett, we will finish out the siding door-window project, which has obviously improved the face of this building. And we'll be done with that finally, as well as some asphalt replacement in the lower north parking lot. At Hope Street, we have to make some corrections with some electrical deficiencies there. And we're going to start with the chiller replacement in the information technology area. At Hummer, asphalt replacement in soccer parking lot. BRU replacement, which is just basically, it has to do with the, with the air conditioning system. Light replacement at the main pool. We've done a lot of major renovations at the auditorium. This will finish that out, along with the, with some roof replacement there as well. Land remodeling the lower-level bathrooms. We've been trying to make some improvements there for our tenant that uses that downstairs area. Quentin Heights, we are already starting that asphalt replacement because we had had that pre-approved, but that's built into this plan. And then again, I mentioned the contingency for the, from the data consult meetings. That is what our plan is. And I'm ready to answer any questions at this time.
Dr. Mickelson.
I've been to the Topeka High parking lot recently. I know we did some parking lot reclass here, I think. But the alleyway that I think is part of the cities, has that ever been?
I am now prepared to go to the city because we've pretty much made the commitment on our end to do all the improvements we promised. And so I'm going to talk to the planning department and see if I can get them to follow through on it. They committed that they would do that if we did what we did. And we're done with that now, so I'm going to try to see what I can get done.
Okay, thank you.
It only took Dr. Mickelson six years. Six years, every year.
Baby step.
Just have to be persistent.
Any, any other questions?
Just. Well, I was in Eisenhower, I don't know. Some kind of, anyway. We noticed, and I, it wasn't, I wasn't there to look, we just, we were in the gymnasium and there was stuff falling off the ceiling. And it was on the floor. And I, I looked up and I could see where it had come down.
There, there is need with that, with the ceiling, I know exactly what you're talking about, to.
Yeah, it looked pretty bad, and I, I'm sorry.
And that's the kind of, to do some patch and repair on, or I should say, patch and painting. At, for instance, Eisenhower, I know exactly where you're talking about. And that's the kind of things that can come out of these maybe data consult meetings where we identify a need. If it ends up being that that's the one that we want to do this year, that would be a possibility.
Yeah, I figured that'd be a summer thing, but I was just.
That's where we're holding that kind of money back.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because I, it was, it looked pretty bad. I mean, I, if I was a parent watching, I saw stuff coming down.
I know exactly, because I walk those facilities and.
I know you do.
I know what you're talking about.
See, the other, the other thing would be the Robinson tennis courts. I mean, I've gone past there, oh my god.
Yes, and so.
Hopefully they're not on it.
We have gone back and forth to kind of get some clarification between our partnership with the county. And so I am going to see if I can finally decide who ultimately owns that responsibility. Is it joint responsibility between us and the, you know, parks and records and ours? But I agree that if it becomes ours, we need to get those.
They, they really look.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We will agree on that, sir.
I guess one other question. There's no Tuck Pointing at Topeka High on your list.
That is true. There's always room, there's always room for that. So I'm, I'm sure that that will always be ongoing with the amount of brick that is on that building, right?
I know, it's just funny. I just, I said, what's the Tuck Pointing? I don't believe in Tuck. I know, I know, but I mean.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Well, my project.
Yes, we, we do have, we've contacted a, a company that makes, that does an assessment and then offers recommendations relative to ADA. I guess requirements and things that are needed in facilities. We do have, I guess, one that we're trying to revitalize, resurrect, I guess I should say, from just a few years ago, from a company that has performed an assessment at three of our, our three high schools. And as soon as we get that assessment, we will add that to our plans and start to work on making the ADA accessible.
Well, I hope they understand there's the letter of the law and then there's the spirit of the law. So I'm looking for the spirit of the law.
Okay.
Our other discussion item is our legislative voice proposal. What legislative voice?
If I can, President, there are two items that the other superintendents and our school boards are suggesting, the superintendents send in one item in terms of the high density at-risk waiting at sunsets. And so we just want to make sure that that still remains on there, that we expect that weighted funding. And then we would like to see additional funding, or it's proposed that there's additional funding for social emotional services under that school safety section. Those were two items that were discussed. And the other superintendents, this hasn't gone to their boards yet. But the legislative filings sent us December fourth as the date in which they would like for us to speak. And so I figure since this came to us this week, this would be the time for you all to share any other thoughts you might have in adjusting last year's agenda. It is not, we'd like to add that because it sunsets, that law sunsets. And then we want to add the social emotional piece.
The absence of that one would be a.
Yes, under safety, yes.
So we'd add high density to the school funding, but the social emotional piece under safety?
Yes, the, definitely the social emotional was under safety. And I have to go back and look at where the high density funding would, for at-risk funding would be at. Those are the only things proposed from the other districts. And just check your emails today in terms of what they, others might like to see, just informal conversations.
Well, what we were talking about tonight with the chamber and the, and the, and it was on Topeka, having to do with the, particularly the NRAs and the, of the national revenue bondings and their impact on us, which is, which is substantial, that it may be, the other districts may not have any interest in that, but I would think that somehow we could maybe look at that in terms of being exempt schools. We know the state exempts their own twenty mils from any tax abatement pain. But they don't let us exempt, be exempt from things we have to, for. So it seems to me that fair is fair. I'd like to see us try to do something since we're feeling this pain here. If the other districts don't want to do it, I would ask that at least we would be able to present, if we can get the chamber and the city to meet with us and talk about it, to present a proposal that we asked, Bank Neil and lobbyists to, to ask the respective lobbyists to get together, put together legislation that would benefit public schools and other schools in the state, who have the law and assessment evaluation, particularly. But we could ask for everybody to get the benefit, to get all the support we can get. But if we had a limited, sponsor a piece of legislation to do that. So what we need, so the delegation needs, we can talk with the city, to present at the same time.
So to give you time to do that piece, would it be, would it be something that you'd like to see in terms of if the one voice, you know, still captured the voice of the full county, but the chamber's lobbyist and our lobbyist, Ms. Crowe, getting together and creating a proposal? Sorry, the city's lobbyist and Ms. Crowe getting together and creating some proposal that perhaps is more in-depth? Is that something that the board might want to see that happen? And then, and then to speak with the delegation from that vantage point, which may be a separate item from the one voice, or you ask?
Yeah, I know, both. I said, I don't know whether it should go into one voice, because I don't know what kind of investment the others had, and if they've really looked at this. I don't know that any, you know, Washington Earl, you know, they're one of the, they're one of the schools that had all the top assess valuations per pupil. Where we're, we're not there, so that may not be an issue for them. So it may not go in one voice. But if it doesn't, then I think we need to take time from the delegation, the whole delegation will be there, to hear from the city and the local chamber and Topeka Public Schools about the need for some kind of relief from this issue for us. And they can put the bill together later, they just have to talk about what we would like to do and want the delegation to support us. And we, they, they will put it together.
The full board would like to see that happen. In past years, the delegation has offered Topeka a time and the one voice group a time. And we've gone as one voice, but we perhaps could still do that, but ask for the secondary time because we're so large. And let that be a platform to go much more in-depth in that one, you know, within that one time.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care. I just, it needs to be done. Let's see that. Tell her.
So is that satisfactory that if perhaps we can garner the second time to allow you to go in much more depth than what you might go into the one voice? And the one voice, when we all come together, we speak for a minute. It's not very long because we're sharing that floor. So for something a little more in-depth, we can ask for that second time for the delegation and the city's lobbyists and ours to get together and turn that over for, that to be facilitated. So I can get.
Yeah, we'll even, we don't know that they'll go with us enough. You know, we may have to use it for our whole, ourselves. But I think. Now, I mean, I think that we need to get with the city and the chamber, Arch Street Chamber and the school district, and we go together and we say, this is our plan. This is what we think needs to happen, and we wanted to go together and ask the delegation to support a bill that we would propose. Can't close it down, it's what it has it, but working together to put this, done this session.
I'll call up you and Dr. Morrison and whoever else that would like to give me direction before the one voice.
We say to you that, in the chamber, to put this together, but.
Before the one voice, or we, what that looks like for right now?
Yeah.
With those two additions that I proposed?
Yes, I mean, I, so what I'd like to do would be take this and give it just a little bit more of a beat to it. And if anything comes up for next week, I will circulate it to Dr. Morrison and to you. But yeah, that sounds like a good idea. I mean, so Ms. Kirk kind of alluded to it earlier, but there used to be everyone, there is a, every year, it's going to be worse, the history's had to sign off. It's different. None of us are going that far, requesting that. It's not, I say that just to, it's not a new issue.
You know, it's, it's not a new issue, but I. So we have, we have, if we have the city and the chamber, we have more support than just school district, safety.
So this is just a discussion item tonight. So if we look at that and bring it back next time for, for action item. And. And maybe we, you and I, or you knowledgeable people from the legislature, you and Patrick, could meet with the chamber. No, I know, but you were pretty close. Yeah. So is the rest of the board okay with those type of things?
Maybe just, just a sidebar, we're probably going to have to make some kind of decision here about the TIF. Not tonight, but sometime here, we're, we're going to make some decision about the TIF.
Do I understand you're right to say that we could stop it?
Yes.
I think we have to pass a resolution. Isn't there something that you could do back?
I, but what, but that's.
The board, the board could stop it. Totally by passing a resolution.
And I don't know that we want to do that. I'm just saying that if we could get everybody to hold off and try this other approach, the, this, the TIF, it hurts us less, far less than the, than the NRAs and the others. Others are much more onerous to us.
And if Mike Morrison's right, they're going for the big bucks for the TIF anyway. So, I mean, we'll never, probably, and your board members won't see that happen at all. So.
Certainly not my career. I don't know enough. But I'll know enough, we may ask, yeah.
But, but you two know the legislature, so I'm just thinking.
Yeah, that's what we can certainly talk about the, you know, the, working with us to develop the bills that we would ask our delegation to sponsor.
So I think maybe the next step would be Ms. Lister setting up a meeting with that group that wanted to set up a meeting with us. And maybe within.
Quickly, because the delegation meets on the fourth, right? So we have to have a plan placed before the fourth. So Patrick schedules with Morris, so we'll put her on in.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we got Thanksgiving too, so should be within the next two weeks. They're smarter than me.
Well, all we can do, all we're gonna do is, all we're gonna do is facilitate this.
We're gonna get it started, that's all.
Get it started and it's gonna be up the rest of you to carry it all, but.
Then I'll grab. Closing that, board comments.
Good evening. First of all, Sue, congratulations again and the other two left, but I'm looking forward to working with you on behalf of our kids. Just wanted to share with you, I attended a KASB workshop entitled Development Cultural Proficiency on October the 30th. That was the night that it snowed, but I was hoping they'd cancel it, but it turned out to be very good. We had representatives from Salina, Manhattan, Junction City and all the way from Perryview, so school district, which is down by Pleasant. But it was very informative, a lot of interaction. And then last Saturday I was invited to attend KNA's, it's definitely gonna get this right here, Social Justice and Racial.
Flipping racial and social justice.
Justice Education Summit. And I attended a workshop on restorative justice dismantling the school to prison pipeline. It was, again, very informative, so all in all, I had a good, good time.
So did you pick up anything we need to do differently?
I'm an auditory learner, we had to have a conversation.
Okay.
I don't, I don't take notes, I can, I just, we could sit down and talk about it, yes, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
That's it, I think.
Dr. Mickelson?
Two quick items, I attended the academic calendar committee, the leadership sourcing was there also and good representation from parents and administrators. And it seems like the 2021 year is gonna, calendar flows pretty well, there's five of our calendars proposed and four of them are almost, you know, a day or two different, very, very similar. We're gonna meet again in a couple of weeks and we may have a calendar proposed here relatively soon. And then with all due respect, Ms. Bowley, I, I paused Tuesday morning as I voted, thought about writing in four names, but I, I didn't, I voted, I circled a, I circled a little bubble rather than voting any names, but I did think about you all Tuesday as I was voting, so, anyway.
Well, I had the opportunity to, to attend the high school showcase where both Topeka West and, well, Topeka West, Topeka High and Highland Park were performing on Monday night. Definitely they represented us well, very excited about this opportunity here as they continue to present and know that they go play state or, you know, these are beautiful vocals. And then I did something I've never done, because I'm a basketball player, I tend to go for indoor events, but I went to Topeka West marching band's lighting ceremony, I guess, I'm sure it has an actual name, but just to watch their skills, which they do their routines, the routine, I think they did it all, just lights on their uniforms, which was very exciting. And so this nice opportunity to meet parents and just to see our kids perform and just to have a performance that's excellent. I also thank Dr. Anderson for the opportunity to attend the, the consults, because I think that just gives us more insight into processes that happen in our buildings on a regular basis. And I know partly my, my colleague, perhaps you both do the same thing, it's kind of grieving, but at the same time, it's the excitement for us to come next for this school district. We will, we will miss the loss, we can't, we may also feel a little bit, being able to serve and interact with our community in this way and this frustration has been a long process. I might look at my last meeting, but it's not, I'll be back.
No, you gotta be back three more times.
I would agree with Mrs. Johnson, I did get the chance to go to a data consult as well and I, I have little doubt that they are highly contributing to the achievement that we're seeing in our schools. It's just a level of accountability that we've not had in the district before, that's, it was very inspiring to see. Oh, I would also encourage, it's kind of school play and musical time, so it may get out to the high schools. Topeka High is doing the Laramie project, which I think is a really bold and ambitious choice, so I'd encourage people to fit those in. Okay, and that's all for me.
One very brief comment today and really that's congratulations to the board members elect. We have one who's still with us, Ms. Bowley, congratulations. We missed Dr. Bone, or I missed Dr. Bone break and I saw Melanie Stewart Campbell briefly, Mrs. Campbell briefly, but looking forward to, to you guys getting a chance to serve and watching you in action and certainly appreciate that you were willing to step forward and put your names on the ballot. That's not an easy thing for people to do. So with that, I'll maybe break my rule when I just said, I wanna go and add one more thing. Since it's one song day, you know, I'm feeling the same way. Ditto to everything that Ms. Johnson and Dr. McCarthy said, so.
Ms. Kirk?
Well, just a, a sidebar, that Topeka High string quartet this week is selected to play at the Lee Center with people putting on this ABO whatever. And, you know, I, I got real excited because it was my little girl, my little girl next door, who's one of the violinists, and I, I was the one that had to go get her violin and when she forgot it and take it to middle school with her, so I feel like I've contributed to her success. Well, but it's, I, I was really thrilled to see that, so, what, and, and I guess that they're really making it quite an event for the kids because they've already been talking to the people from California about what they're going to be doing and the people who are meeting and et cetera, et cetera, so it's pretty cool for the kids and I'm just pleased they had a chance to do it, they're gonna be a chance to do it, and that they're making it special for the kids, so.
You're glad we had your kids on the stage.
Oh my gosh, I was, I know. Yeah, I know that, that's, I don't know. Yeah, I think it's, it's, you have to live in Lawrence, yeah. But anyway, anyway, I felt that was great for our kids, we had that little opportunity. Speaks well for the recognition of arts and Topeka Public Schools.
So, couple of things, I went and exercised with the kindergartners and, I, they were a lot faster than I, you know, but that was at dual language school. This is, I actually was there with the PE instructors and the kids at Scott and the, the two PE instructors there are phenomenal and they have a program, yeah, Cody Bonham and Troy Sinclair. And so I had a, a lot of fun watching the kids and helping them on tight rope and all kinds of things. And they're gonna be here next time because they won, they, that, their model phys ed won an award and so they'll be representing, I told them to bring some videos of the kids. So that was fun. The other thing I attended was the concert put on by the Topeka Symphony for our kids. And I wanted to say that three years ago, maybe three or four, we were sending about 200 kids or something. Well, we're sending all of our fourth graders now. They had 3,500 kids at the School Days concert and I must say that the repertoire that was played by the Topeka Symphony was child oriented and the kids just loved it, I could just, you could just tell the excitement were. So I think that's a very, well, good money spent. And the other thing I'll throw in a plug, Patrick's daughter, she'll be playing this Sunday in concert at 3 o'clock at White Concert Hall. Tickets are cheap, so if you'd like to come and see some of our, our kids play in the youth ensembles from Topeka Symphony, come 3 o'clock, White Concert Hall. And with that, there's no other business, I'm move, move for adjournment? All in favor?